Good evening. I'd like to call to order a meeting at Belbrook City Castle, February the 10th, 2020. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Pam, if you can call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Here.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Schwaller?
Here. We have a motion to excuse Councilman Greenwood.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilman Greenwood.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. He called in, said he was sick this evening. By the way, I've got a little bit of a throat problem, so if I start coughing, please excuse me and bear with me.
We'll send you home.
Yeah, work too. Does any member of -- oh, we have to call the vote?
Yes.
That's right.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to excuse Mr. Greenwood from tonight's meeting. This was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwaller?
Yes. Thank you. Next is the approval of the executive session and regular meeting minutes of January the 27th, 2020. Does any member of council have any corrections or additions?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Under Mayor's announcements, first on the agenda tonight is the resignation of Council Member Tim Taylor. I would like to read his resignation to you. Dear Madam City Manager, per conversation in your office on 3/1/2020 regarding same and as it would adversely affect my disability pension due otherwise, I regretfully tender my resignation from and renounce the position of Councilman for the city of Belbrook to which I was elected to be effective immediately. Respectfully submitted, best, Tim Taylor. Letter is dated January the 28th, 2020. Tim, you will be missed. I appreciate your energy. I know you campaigned very hard out there, and I think that the citizens are very supportive of you, but I certainly understand your situation and will miss you on council. Anyone else on council? Any comments or anything?
Just the same, Mayor.
Absolutely.
It was a pleasure getting to know Tim, seeing the passion, and Tim understand the position you're in, but we will miss you.
Sorry we wore you out so quickly.
Those one-hour meetings.
Yeah.
Pam, do you want to take us through the process for everybody as far as where we go from here?
Sure. So there are state laws states that we have 60 days to fill the empty seat, and so as of tonight, that is posted as an opening. So interested citizens of Belbrook who have lived in the city at least one year, who have an interest, can submit a resume and letter of interest to my attention through the city website, and so we'll accept applications for two weeks, and then council will interview interested applicants and make a decision, and that person will be appointed.
Okay, thank you. So you can submit your application as soon as tonight, and for two weeks then we'll go from there.
Can we explain how long that appointment lasts? Because I believe that the appointment lasts until the next election.
No, this would be for the unexpired seat.
For the unexpired term.
Yes.
So basically, it's the entire four-year term.
Yes, yes. When Dr. Dave came, he was taking Mike Schwaller's seat, which had expiration of December 31st of 2021.
Okay.
This seat will be Mr. Taylor's seat, so it will have the 2023 expiration.
Okay, because that's always been very confusing.
Yes.
We should double-check that just to make sure that he doesn't have to run the next general election.
No. Because otherwise, you could get all bunched up, and we could have all of council then, you know.
We'll lose our --
Of election at the same time, so it keeps everyone spread out.
Thanks for looking into it. Next, with the oath of office for Historical Museum trustee, Dan Teeman. Dan is in the audience. I asked him to come front and center.
I don't know how we have to hear this, but I'll follow what you tell me.
Just gotta raise your right arm. You can look around to his words, too. I, Dan Teeman.
I, Dan Teeman.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And this Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
Then I will.
Then I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
uphold and enforce.
uphold and enforce. uphold and enforce.
the provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
and the ordinances of Belbrook.
And the ordinances of Belbrook.
and will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
upon which I'm about to.
About, upon which I'm about to.
Welcome back and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
He served before, and he's coming back again. We're gonna have a pen. We'll have you go ahead and sign. You can sign here, and we'll make it official.
Absolutely. My wife wanted to take pictures, but I told her to stay at home.
We'll tell Louie to give you a little additional camera time. February the 10th, 2020.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for serving. Appreciate it.
I'll be back.
I got a foul.
Yeah, I knew you had a problem.
Next up on the list of any technical difficulties is the Police Department report. I'd like to introduce Chief Doug Doherty.
Good evening, Council, City Manager. You'll forgive me, I was sick last week, so we had this prepared and in place to the City Manager last week, but I say that only because I may not have the same enthusiastic bravado that I normally do, so I appreciate your patience. Okay.
I don't know what happened, but it worked.
Okay, yeah. So this is just basically a kind of a quick summary of the year's events. As you have known, the Police Department, we had a very tumultuous year. 2019 was very tumultuous for us. Started in February about a year ago, we lost Sergeant Mead to cancer, so that kind of just started things for us. We were kind of playing behind the rest of the year with, you know, manpower, but in Brian's memory, we were able to -- one of the things that he said is he didn't want to be forgotten, so we made sure that the flagpole out front has a marker, and we dedicate the flagpole to Brian. We have a very nice plaque in our assembly room that we've dedicated to him, and on the cover of the annual report, you'll see that the picture is of his wife and children, and then the tall gentleman that looks like Brian is his brother Eric, who became our pastor. So there was a lot of things that happened, you know, with Brian and his family, so we go from that to our -- we had a mass shooting event that happened in Dayton that impacted Belbrook, as you all know. So that how that played out for us was we got out there -- I got out there that Sunday morning, a few hours after the shooting, and it was important for me to give a level of protection to the family, you know, because there was just a lot of things that were happening, and for the next three days down there, acted as a spokesperson for the city and for the family both, and was able to make a lot of connections and with the media, local media, and the media was from -- came from everywhere. As it started to play out more and more and more, you know, we were starting to hear that the news that what had happened had spread, you know, not only outside of Ohio, but nationwide and then worldwide, so it was kind of a big thing, and I didn't know how stressful that was until it was over, because you're in it, but at the end, you know, we worked as a team, things went on, you know, during that time. We actually conducted our National Night Out, which was the exact same time that this was happening, so, you know, it's a credit to the officers that worked with us. Lieutenant Carmen was great, was always good with helping me, you know, prepare or have things ready, so that's the beauty of working here on the Belbrook Police Department, is we're very much a team and a family, so that was part of it. So to add to our year, we had a lot of turnover. We had three people that had resigned, so we had to replace people. So we brought in Stephanie Bennington, Ryan Johnson, and Greg Williams, all fantastic young officers, and we're very proud to have them, but they're new and they're learning the job, and so there's somewhat of a learning curve, and that creates some training issues for us to make sure that everybody's up on the same sheet. In addition to the officers, we had an administrative assistant that we replaced due to her resignation, and I can tell you, she is fantastic. We haven't missed anything, you know, things are running smoother than they ever have, and so we're caught up on manpower, things are running smoothly, so hopefully you won't have some of the -- we weren't hitting on all cylinders for the entire year, but I feel like coming into 2020 that we have that behind us, and we're kind of all rowing in the same direction, so that's really nice. To finish off this slide, we had two new sergeants. So we had a sergeant that resigned, and we had a sergeant that passed away, so that created a need for two new positions, a sergeant. One is Tony Vedder, you see him, he comes up to council meetings, and Jim Burns, and they're both very experienced, and they care deeply about the community and the Belbrook Police Department, so we're lucky to have them. So that was the personnel. Calls for service. If you've had a chance to look at some of these, you'll notice that some of the numbers are down, and in some areas, they're down significantly. Some I can explain, and some I cannot. Some calls, we just don't have the volume as far as report writing. We have changed how we do our report writing. No longer are we taking reports just to take reports. That doesn't make any sense. We will take the appropriate police action, i.e. a police report, if it is criminal activity or reported to criminal activity or could lead to criminal activity, or, you know, not just for us or for other agencies, but we're not going to do police reports if there's a tree in the street after a wind event, or, you know, helping a motorist with a car or pushing a car out of the way. We're not going to do that. That doesn't make any sense for what our mission is, so you'll see some of that reflected, and it may just be a little bit of a difference next year when you see us come back with the new stats. It'll kind of right itself, but we'll go to traffic enforcement. Again, a little bit, the citations were up from last year, the warnings down a little bit, DUS down just a little bit, and OVI about the same as last year. We were missing at times two people, at times one person for a large part of the year, so that's a significant amount of people if we only have, you know, X number of people on the street, and we take one out of that equation, that's going to have an impact on us, but I think you'll see that the numbers, how we go about writing tickets and for what purpose, I think you'll be very pleased with how we do that. That's been a topic we've discussed here at council meetings before, and I think we're on the right track with that. We're treating that as more of a scalpel rather than a baseball bat, and how we're dealing with the issues, and how we would issue a warning versus a citation, so I think slowly we're getting away from a reputation of being a ticket-trap town and applying the appropriate amount of enforcement that's needed based on the circumstances, so I think this is a reflection of our efforts in that ongoing. Training. Training is always an issue. A few new -- Forrest would always ask me about the training and continuing education credits. This is a -- in 2019 was the second year that the State of Ohio did not require continuing education credits, so that leaves us with, you know, kind of doing our training as we see fit and what we need. So we had the Dayton Bomb Squad came in with the fire department, helped set that up, and we were part of that. That was really good. Of course, we have our annual firearms taser, legal updates, and medical marijuana updates, and that's an ongoing issue, too, that is really, you know, we'll continue to get training on that as we go. So in training, so going into training this year, obviously, we're gonna have to send people to -- into training to become defensive tactics instructors, taser instructor, to fill some of the positions that were taken by the officers that had resigned, so it's gonna take us a little bit of time. That's not something that you can just go send everybody to training and be caught up, so some of this is based on -- we have prioritized on need and what we want and who we're gonna send, so we want to send the right people for the right position at the right time, so that's kind of somewhat of a coordinated balancing act for us. So the last thing I have is basically just our community policing. We have several pictures, you know, up here, the Tony Rubels talking to a group of preschoolers, which we get to sit in on every year. It's fantastic. They ask a lot of really good questions. And then you see Lieutenant Carmen, I believe that picture's from the National Night Out, and then our bike officers we have, too. And then this year, you'll see we will have a bike officer on day shift and two officers on evenings on bikes, so that's a great tool that we've used, and we're just adding to that in 2020, so that's good. Just the picture on the far left there is Mark Burns and I out on a neighborhood walk, wildly popular with the residents, and going on the walks and going into the different parts of town, the different neighborhoods, people actually sitting out in lawn chairs waiting for us to come walking by. Don't have an exact route, you know, but people are very pleased to see us when we come, and just to give you a quick story, I don't want to belabor this moment, but we had a gentleman that would never have come to the Police Department to, in his words, bother us, but he said, "Is there something you can do about speeding the cars come down, you know, this road quickly?" And I said, "Sure." Got my phone out, texted Lieutenant Carmen, and I said, "Hey, can we get the extra patrols on, you know, the street?" "Sure thing. They'll be on there in 10 minutes." So he does -- he removes that from his house. He puts it on the in-car computers that we have. The officers know of it instantly, so we had someone that would never have come to the Police Department, see me, and are out walking, gets the -- has the courage to come up and ask a question, and we get the problem settled in minutes, and I saw a car sitting down there just, you know, later that evening, you know, so that's just a great example of the impact that we have when we're out walking and seeing people, that people may not -- they don't want to bother us, or they're busy, you know, but if we're, you know, if they see us out walking, you know, they're more apt to come up to us and talk to us, which is fantastic. The middle picture is one of our officers was involved in a game of cricket, which I wish I would have seen that. That would have been great. And then that's me and a tour with some children, and then the picture on the far left is was my rider for the Lions Festival. She happened to be my granddaughter, so that was fantastic. She loved that, which was really fun. She loved hitting the siren as we went by, so a lot of people probably still clearing out their ears from this event. And then so, you know, the picture on the far right, we have -- we greet the children every day up at Stephen Bell and BCI, so this is a picture of Stephen Bell, and the children come in, and we give them high fives every morning, and it's the perfect start to any day, but I can tell you, we've kind of leaned on that, you know, this year. It was nice just because they don't have it here in the world. They just like seeing us, and so it's great. So that's kind of the thumbnail of the annual report. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Chief, good report. I know it was a difficult year, and thanks for your service. We enjoy what you do for us, and I'm glad you're part of Belbrook. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council have any comments on the report?
I was just looking at the types of crime, and the ID thefts look like they skyrocketed this year.
Yeah, and that's one of the things I kind of alluded to, where I can't -- there's no explanation for that, you know, there's always people out, you know, trying to scam people. We try to get that as a public service announcement out as much as we can about things that are happening in real time. We put it on our website, we put it on our lobby TV, but--
They're getting a lot more sophisticated.
It's a constant battle. We're always behind in that, because we're always being reactive to that, because we don't know what the ploy is, so--
And the other huge increase I saw was domestic-related, which is--
Yeah, and, you know, we -- I wish I had a way that we could control that, but I can tell you that we're very professional in how we handle that, in how we report it, how it's followed up on, and--
It's one of the most dangerous calls you make.
Yes, it can be very, very difficult.
How are we on car break-ins? Is that under vandalism, criminal damaging? It's down. I don't know if you segmented between--
I can tell you that this past year, it wasn't as bad of an issue, and I know that I've been here at this forum begging people to lock their car doors, so, you know, please lock your cars when you go to bed at night. Don't leave valuables in your cars, so that's something that we constantly harp on, whether this is a result of that or is this an aberration, it's hard to say, but we're very -- we have, you know, young people working nights, and they're active and, you know, moving, so hopefully some of that is just all kind of coming together and diminishing that issue.
Are we gonna have a bike patrol at night again this summer or spring?
Well, we have -- we're gonna have three bike officers. So not sure exactly that we have two that are assigned on evening shift, and these assignments are based on seniority, so if we can get another officer that's on nights to agree to go to school to do that, then I would love to have one on every shift to do that. I think it's beneficial.
Thank you.
Sure.
I was fortunate enough to go on a ride along a couple weeks ago, and one of my take-homes was that we seem to receive a lot of suspicious vehicle calls, and certainly, that's the largest number on the list outside of traffic enforcement. Each one of those, by the time we got there, which was very quickly, had almost always diffused, even at night, so I wonder if you had any advice for the citizens regarding suspicious vehicles, ways to use some judgment on whether or not you should call something like that in or not?
I would always encourage people to call, you know. We'll come and figure out what it is, or what it can be, or what it may have been. I would rather that than scratch their head and, "I don't want to bother them," because if we're not doing that, we're gonna be doing something else, so I would just say to everybody, "Please call. Let us come out and determine what the problem is." It might be connected to something else that they have no way of knowing what it is, or it may not be suspicious necessarily, but it might be something that is related to something else that we're working on, but that we need to know, and it's funny how things like that work, but it would just be very encouraging to people to keep calling.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Great job.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Next item is public hearing of ordinances. We have none this evening. We do have the introduction of two ordinances. First is ordinance 2020-1. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordnance number 2020-1, an ordinance amending Section 412.06, parades and assemblages of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code. Where the City of Belbrook has added Section 412.07, special events, to its codified ordinances, with the adoption of ordinance 2019-16, and whereas Section 412.06, parades and assemblages, needs to be amended to coincide with the aforementioned addition to the municipal code for the City of Belbrook. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the following amendment of Section 412.06, parades and assemblages of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with the deletion shown by strike-throughs, and addition shown by italics and underline. Section 412.06, parades and assemblages, no person shall conduct or participate in any parade, procession, or assemblage upon any street or highway, block off any street or highway area without first obtaining a special event permit outlined in Section 412.07. Section 2, this ordinance shall take in effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
This was just a cleanup after the incorporation and creation of 412.07 for special event permits. We actually had to look back at the ordinances for some sort of research that we were doing, and we saw this, and we noticed that the bulk of this didn't apply, and we just wanted to reference the new special event ordinance that was adopted late last year, so it was just a cleanup.
Okay. Any discussion amongst council on ordinance 2020-1?
Should we include sidewalks?
Sidewalks is addressed in 412.07. We could make that correction if that's something that council would like to see.
If it's already addressed, that's -- I think it's probably adequate. I didn't--
When it outlines in 412.07, when it outlines special events, it says anything that would block a street or a sidewalk would require a special event permit, so this section was just related to parades and assemblages, which I believe were -- I mean, the assemblage part could tie into the sidewalks, too, so--
Yeah, maybe it'd be better to have it consistent.
We could just add or sidewalks in there.
Street sidewalk or highway.
Mm-hmm. So I can make that change and bring it to the next meeting.
So we should table it for now?
Um, I think it can be approved with changes, Greg.
Yes, we can introduce it with the changes agreed upon here tonight, and then at the public hearing, it'll be voted on in its corrected form.
Okay.
So can I ask a question on this? If it doesn't block the sidewalk, you just gather, and nobody's blocked, you can go around. Would that wouldn't be -- it's blocking it totally that we're talking about, right?
Yeah, anything that would impede the regular flow of traffic on a sidewalk or a street is really what this is.
You just -- you can't block it off?
Yeah, you just can't block it off.
But if you wanted to have a sidewalk, say, and you have a table out there, you just -- that wouldn't affect, okay?
As long as there's still room to move it, it wouldn't be an issue.
So we wanted to read, "No person shall conduct or participate in any parade, procession, or assemblage upon any street, sidewalk, or highway."
Or block off any street, sidewalk, or highway.
So put it in both areas. So put it in both areas.
So it'll be in there twice then?
I don't know if it needs to be twice. Upon any street or highway, or block off any street or highway area. You could then add sidewalk in that.
Including sidewalk?
So it could be street, comma, highway, or sidewalk area?
Yeah, I'd put sidewalk in both, just the streets, highway, both of them. We certainly intend for it to mean that way, as I gather.
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion? We have a motion for the adoption of ordinance 2021, or 2020-1 as amended.
I'll make a motion to adopt or introduce ordinance number 20-21, or 2020-1, with amended language to include sidewalks.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards made a motion to introduce ordinance 2020-1, an ordinance amending section 412.06, parades and assemblages of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code, with the addition of the word sidewalk, amending the description. And this was seconded by Mr. Havens. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes, thank you.
Next up is ordinance number 2020-2. Councilman Havens, please.
It's ordinance number 2020-2, an ordinance repealing old section 856.03 and enacting new section 856.03, license application and requirements of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code. Whereas the City of Belbrook outlines the requirements necessary in obtaining a permit for soliciting in the City of Belbrook in section 856.03, license application and requirements of the municipal code, and whereas section 856.03C currently has no limit on the number of individuals an organization may obtain a permit for, the application fee of $20. And whereas the current application fee does not adequately cover the staff time involved in performing background checks of numerous individuals to obtain said permit, and whereas section 856.03 needs to be repealed and replaced in order to limit the number of individuals per organization to five per application fee. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains section 1, that the section 856.03 license application and requirement of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code be and is hereby repealed. Section 2, a new section, 856.03 license application and requirement of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code be enacted, to be read as set forth with deletions shown by strike-through and additions shown by italics and underline. This is, uh, pretty lengthy. I think I could probably summarize it. Essentially, we're saying we want to have the name of the applicant, physical description of the applicant, social security number of the applicant, driver's license number, uh, with the state of issue, address, um, who he's, uh, peddling and soliciting for, what he's peddling and soliciting, all places and residents of the, uh, applicant, and all employment during the preceding year. Names of other, I mean, this was interesting, names of other municipalities in which the applicant has conducted, peddling or soliciting activities within the past calendar year. Essentially, just gathering more information, being more complete, and making sure that, uh, the charges, uh, reflect the, the, the work that the city would have to do to, uh, to accomplish the, the, uh, process of approving.
So the main change to this was, uh, section C. That was, that was where the change occurred, and the way that this used to ra, read is if you were an organization, you could apply and pay, uh, a $20 fee for a permit for unlimited individuals in your organization. And we have had organizations that have submitted 50 names at a time. Um, so for $20, having to run and complete background checks for 50 people was just, it was too much. So, um, we made this change so that the $20 would cover up to five people, and then they would, they would have to pay an additional $20 per five people, so if they wanted to have 50 people as part of their organization, be able to have this permit and go out into the community, they would just have to pay 10 separate fees for that, so. It would just more adequately cover the co, the staff time that's involved in running those background checks, because it does, it takes some time to do that.
$20 covers five background checks?
Well, they're just ran through our, uh, computer system downstairs, so it doesn't take that long.
It's not a, uh, sophisticated.
No, it's not a sophisticated process, but it can be cumbersome if you have 50 individuals to run at a time, and you're only collecting a $20 fee for that, so we're just trying to level that off a little bit without being too cumbersome.
How many do we do in a year?
I'm not sure how many we do in a year.
What's an example of an organization that would?
A lot of it's door-to-door sales, is, is what this is typically for. But I can find out for the next meeting how many we typically issue a year.
My only comment is, $20 enough?
Yeah, I, I.
I don't, I don't almost think about going $10 ahead or something.
I was saying $50 ahead. That's what I charge for, uh, uh, applications when I have to do background checks.
Well, apparently their background check isn't as.
Well, the chief, chief of police, I mean, he's worth some.
You feel it's adequate?
It's actually, um, the administrative assistant down there, I believe, is the one that runs them. Detective Better, is that, or Sergeant Better, is that correct? Is it the administrative assistant does it?
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I get a lot of people door-to-door in my neighborhood, and I've yet to see one who's had any kind of permit.
Because they left it in the car.
Yeah, because they left it in the car.
Do we have to even allow this as a city?
I mean, if we don't have an ordinance like this to regulate it, then there's nothing that could really stop somebody from going door-to-door.
I mean, could we prevent it, not allow it?
You're, you're cutting off, uh, an awful lot of.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, how that would be possible.
That's, that's pretty, that's often restricted.
I think that this is a, a good solution, because we're ensuring that the people are out there that are doing it the right way, are.
They're legitimate.
Legitimate folks that aren't going to be any type of a danger to the community.
We had several in my neighborhood last year. I don't know why. I called the police on every one of them that I was home for, and they responded within minutes and basically checked them out. Of course, they didn't have a permit, and then they wanted to make sure that if they got a permit, they have to have a background check, and then once they were told they did, then they sued up the area. I should make sure $20 is enough from the city's standpoint.
Yeah, for 50 people, to only charge them $200 seems, did I do that math right?
That's been, yeah, that's been a rare occurrence, but it, it's happened, so it, we're just trying to prevent that.
I'm not sure we would want to unleash 10, 50 salesmen on the entire city.
Yeah.
That's kind of where my comment comes from, is do we have to allow this, so.
It's rare.
It's rare.
That's good to hear.
Probably rare to be even allowed.
I, I feel like the fee is fair.
Any more discussion on ordinance 2020-2? That being the case, we have a motion for ordinance 2020-2.
I actually do have one other question.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, do we ever deny them if we, uh, if the background check comes back? And is that non-refundable fee?
I don't, I would have to ask about that, a situation like that in particular, where that's happened and how that's been handled, because that's all taken care of in the police department downstairs, so.
I would just think we'd want that to be stated as it's not a refundable fee, if they don't get it.
Yeah.
The application.
We have denied them on background checks, specifically, yes.
It's a $20 fee to apply. Doesn't say it's a guaranteed.
Shall pay a non-refundable application fee?
Okay, so in section C, shall pay a non-refundable.
That's a good comment.
Thank you.
So I'll ask about how many we issue per year, and then how a denial is handled, or maybe the frequency of those, since we're changing the language. We're going to keep the fee. It's going to be non-refundable now, so it's really not that much of an issue now, then.
Okay.
So I'll check on how many we issue per year.
Any more discussion? Can we have a motion?
Um, I, I make a motion that we accept, uh, the, uh, ordinance, uh, 2020-2.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Our motion was made by Mr. Havens to introduce ordinance 2020-2, an ordinance repealing old section 856.03 and enacting new section 856.03, license application and requirements of the City of Belbrook Municipal Code, as amended with the clarification of a non-refundable application fee. This was seconded by Dr. Van Beldheisen. Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes.
We have no resolutions for this evening, but we do have a city manager report.
Okay, we have a few things to go over. So tonight, we started the annual reports. We started with the police department. Fire will be on February 24th, and then, uh, we added service as of last year, so service will be on March 9th, and that will round out the annual reports. The Green County Commissioners distributed, uh, grant checks, uh, for the second year, which was nice, and they actually changed the formula in which they were distributing the money. So the first year, they gave a million dollars out, and it was 750,000 went to villages and townships, and then the other 250,000 got split between the cities. And since we were the smallest of the cities by a long shot, we got significantly less than, uh, some of our larger counterparts, which were township folks, so, uh, they, they didn't actually do a presentation this year, so council did not get to receive the giant check and get the picture taken with it, but we did receive an additional 19,000, so we, we received $30,000. So we got that check last week, so.
Yay.
Um, we have to, again, submit a report showing how we use the money, and, uh, they, they like to see it leveraged for a grant or something to try to maximize the amount of money that they gave us, and I think we did a pretty good job of maximizing it last year, so I'm hopeful that, uh, we can try to be creative again this year and try to leverage that for as much bang for the buck as we can, but thank you to the Green County Commissioners for, uh, changing that. It actually went, um, by population, so smaller populations got, uh, less money, and larger populations got more, so we ended up, uh, we ended up with $30,000, which was great. Um, something that I received an email, uh, I somehow have started to get AARP's, uh, livable communities newsletter, and it must have been from some sort of a workshop or something that I've attended, because they do send out some good information, and they had a community grant that is open until April, I believe. And when I was reading about the, uh, community grant, it said that it would give, uh, consideration to age-friendly communities, and that kind of piqued my interest, so I started to look into that, and they showed other, uh, communities in, around the country that had this same designation, and, uh, there were four from the state, and I'm not sure when this, uh, this all came about, but I thought that it was interesting. Uh, so what, what becoming an age-friendly community is, is in order to receive that designation, you, uh, commit to identifying community needs with the older population over the course of three years. So that could be as simple as doing a survey, or do a couple of focus groups, and, uh, bring some of the older population in to identify their needs, and then create an action plan over the course of those next three years. So I thought that it was interesting, because we, we try to do as much community outreach as we can, but you can always do a better job reaching different populations, and really trying to be intentional about reaching those other populations. So I thought that this was, this was an interesting opportunity that would allow for staff, uh, it would be myself and Jessica Hanson to be very intentional with talking with some of the, uh, older population, maybe doing a focus group or two, and, uh, just to see how the city could better meet their needs, and see how we could implement the feedback that we receive into some of the work that we're doing. So there's no financial obligation or anything like that. It's just basically a commitment to do, uh, a more intentional community engagement with the older population, so. I thought that that was really interesting, and then it, um, kind of broadened my thinking to think about how we might be able to connect better with, uh, some of the schools and the school-age children, uh, to figure out what they would like to see from their community, and try to just be mindful of those types of things as, as we work through our comprehensive plan and, and develop some of the different things and, uh, projects that we're working on, so. If council would be supportive of that, um, we could, uh, pass a resolution, and the mayor could write a letter saying that we would like to be designated as an age-friendly community, and we would be, uh, committed to, to, to working on, uh, on that for the, for the next three years. So I know that when you say working on it for three years, it, it might sound a little daunting, but from, from what I understood, it, there's no sort of commitment to this involved. It's something that we could work on at our own pace and just, just be committed to, so. If council is supportive of that, then, uh, we could, we could certainly move forward with that, but I thought it was interesting. Wanted to get your guys' take on it.
Discussion on council?
I like the intentionality of at least focusing on what certain groups need, because I know kids need things different than older folks need, and, and there's common needs all across the population, but certain things stand out in different age groups. I think that, I don't, since it doesn't cost us anything, I think it's worthwhile at least pursuing.
I agree. I support it.
If I may, I simply queried, although it doesn't cost anything. There is time and effort, and, um, that's limited. I just simply asked Melissa if that supported her goals for the city, um, for the, um, you know, for the coming year or two. Um, and there was a tangible tie for that, so, I mean, I, I think with that, at least the initial, there's no issue.
You're doing it anyway, just focus it. At least include those questions or outlooks in what you're already doing.
It's my understanding that there is, uh, disproportionately high, um, number of aging population in Belbrook and Shore Creek Township, uh, over surrounding communities, and I think, uh, that makes it even more important. Uh, we want to keep them, and we want them to feel welcome, so I like the idea. I would, uh, I would recommend we, we do something in this.
Nice support as well, so a good idea. Let's follow through with it and see what's. If it gets to be a lot of time, let's revisit it, but if it's just, uh, minimal time and no expense, then we move ahead.
And I'll make sure to document those efforts and report back.
Thanks.
Um, the council was made aware that the, uh, Sable Ridge and Kensington gate, uh, was broken. There was some electrical issues that occurred, uh, several months ago, and, uh, it was, it was fixed, and, uh, now the gate is having further electrical issues, which are going to require a more significant repair. And the quote that was received by the service director is, uh, between eight and 12,000, depending on the fix that is selected, so it's a significant cost, um, and we are currently doing a little bit of research just to understand the history of that and the responsibility financially, and I'm going to follow up with council, so, um, we're just going to kind of hold on that for a little bit until we can, can figure that out more fully, because it is such a big expense to the city for that.
Yeah.
Is the gate open now?
It is.
Yeah.
Have we received any complaints?
Um, the chief and I received one email from, it was somebody from the neighborhood association that had a few people involved in the email, and it was, they were just asking about it, and that was it, and I believe, uh, Ryan has received one call, so.
But not a complaint, just a.
It was a complaint.
It was?
Yeah, that, that person wanted it closed, and I explained to her that it was an emergency access gate, and it doesn't work. It needs to be removed over the service's purpose. She understood when I was finished.
Okay.
And it's been two or three weeks now?
Yeah, at least.
Two, two or three. Um, so the community video that Corey Weaver. So the community video that Cory Weaver created and was submitted for the HGTV contest turned out really beautifully, and I just really want to thank Cory Weaver Full Frame Photography for his donation of his time and talent to shoot and edit and create the video, and everybody that was highlighted in that video. It, it, it turned out really nicely, and Cory also offered, if the city would like to do some sort of like a promotional video for the community that we could use as kind of a marketing tool to try to attract some small business to the downtown, that he would be willing to do that. Of course, that would be associated with a, a fee, and I think he quoted between three and five hundred dollars to do something like that. And I know that we had a video that used to be on our website that was sponsored by some of the businesses, and if, if we wanted to do something like that, we could definitely look at some sponsorship opportunities to be able to fund that. But I think it would be a really nice thing to have that just showcases, showcases the community that can be on our website to, just to help us try to attract some business. Because all of council saw the video, and I think that it was, it, it was really neat to see in a very short period of time a lot of the assets that the community has, and I think that putting a slightly different spin on it to be able to share it with the broader community would be a really good thing to do.
And three to five hundred is the pettins to produce the video.
Yeah, I would say that's a tenth of what it should cost, and he's top-notch professionalism with that, so, yeah. And I think it would be helpful for other folks considering the Belbrook area for, you know, start a business, moving their business, to, to help introduce them to the area very quickly, which would be, I would say, of high value there.
It's just something different that we haven't done before, so I thought it was worth.
It'd be worth thought for sale, and sponsorships, we'd have people that own some properties in town that may want to somehow get involved with it to better, you know, put a spin on their properties or the marketing or something. I, if they want to be sponsors or something like that, should they be agreeable with that?
Okay. Just two quick other things, zoning code changes, there's been conversation about article fourteen, article eighteen, looking and comparing article fourteen to article ten, and staff has already worked, started to work on those things. So any zoning code changes will obviously go through the planning board first in that process, and then come to council once they've approved anything. So that, that work is important work, because those articles are very important to a lot of the, the things that we do here, and they're guiding principles to a lot of decisions that are made in regards to the downtown especially. So they just need a little bit of updating, and we will, we've started to work on that, so we'll start pushing that through. On the twentieth of January, myself and several staff went to a presentation given by a number of individuals, as it related to the Memorial Day tornadoes that hit Beaver Creek specifically. And it was Beaver Creek City Manager, their Township Administrator, Green County EMA, the Solid Waste District, there was a number of different people on this panel that talked about kind of how everything unfolded in their response, and it was a really interesting experience to hear how, how they handled all of that. And I, I was really kind of disappointed that it wasn't more well-attended. There were nine people on the panel, and there were thirteen people in the audience, and seven of us were from Belbrook. So.
Wow.
It was, it was a bit disappointing, because the information was really good, and they took the time to, to put that together. So I was glad that Belbrook had a really solid show of support for what they were doing, and I took probably six pages of notes. So I'm, I'm going to look to put some of their recommendations in place ahead of the game in case anything like that happened in Milbrook. So that's it for me.
Any questions to the city manager?
Just a comment, that when something like those tornadoes hit, that's not something you handle every day. Not, and hopefully don't ever have to handle. So being able to address it and address it quickly and in a responsible manner is a huge tribute to the folks who did it, so.
Absolutely.
Just the coordination that's required, the people that are pulled in, like the, the health, the health commissioner from the Health Department, you don't think about the role that they play in that, but when you have restaurants and you're talking about food that could spoil, and restaurants that are trying to get open again after losing power for who knows how long, and, I mean, they, those businesses rely on the approval of the Health Department to be able to get back opened up again. And so being able to have that coordinated effort and knowing who to call, and somebody is coming to you asking, you know, when their business is going to be able to open back up and be able to have that referral source alone is really important, so.
Right.
It, it just made me think about things that I would have never thought about, like the Health Commissioner and opening backup of restaurants that have to be closed because of a loss of power. I would have never had to think about that.
Did they recommend an action plan to put in place or anything like that, so we don't have to think about it if something like that did occur?
I mean, a solid emergency operations plan is really important, and that's one of the goals of mine this year, is to create a usable emergency operations plan, because we have an emergency operations plan. But if there was a tornado that happened at eleven o'clock at night, the last thing I would do is look for that four-inch-thick binder that doesn't really have a whole lot of useful information in it, to me.
Yeah.
It, it, it needs to be a, a working, usable document that has contact information of different organizations and people and chains of command and things like that that are readily available, and that, you know, the key players would have at their homes.
Yeah.
So council, council should have one, the police chief, fire chief, service director, myself, I mean, anybody that is within the city that would possibly play a role in that needs to, needs to have that.
Good idea.
We don't currently have something like that.
And keeping something like that updated is just a nightmare. I mean, look at all the staff changes that just.
Yeah, right, right. Any more comments, questions? Just want to extend our thanks to the Green County Commissioners. I know last year they gave us eleven thousand dollars, and we were slightly disappointed. And I talked to the Commissioners afterwards, and they said that they realized after they did the allocation that Belbrook is treated as a city, a very small city, and the township's got a lot more in. They said, "Promise us, we'll do better." And they came through on it, they did. I think the distribution was done more in the way the local government fund was being divided. But I really appreciate them for, for stepping up and doing what we said we're going to do. We should send them a thank you too for it.
Yes.
And what was our leverage percentage last year? It was incredibly high, I remember seeing your report.
I don't, I don't remember what it was, but it was, I, I'm pretty sure I probably blew them away with.
I don't think they had more leverage than we did on it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, good report. Committee reports, service. I know we got Forrest and Tim both out, and then Dr. David, anything to report?
Well, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Makes it very easy, yes.
The safety committee report, Tim Taylor was the chairperson, Forrest is out, and we have Elaine Middlestead. Elaine, anything to report there?
I have no idea, I'm the safety committee, sorry.
Thank you. We do have Nick here for the finance and audit report.
Yes, fourth quarter financials are submitted, and revenues are up fifteen percent, expenses were down five percent below the budget for last year, so that's good news. We're at the point of the year now where we submit this information to our auditor, who will start their work, and hopefully will have our audit back by late spring, is that a good estimate of, better than late October?
Yeah, last year I think that the audit was done in June or July, so as a city you have until the end of May to report, or to turn in your financial statements to the state, and then obviously they have until the end of the year to audit. But I'm, I believe it was June or July last year, and it was, I mean, it was record time.
That was when it was totally done.
It was totally done. Yeah, I mean, they, they were on-site for two days, because they do everything remotely. It's, it's really nice, I mean, because it's just, it just offers minimal disruption to the operations.
Sure.
I mean, when they were in the conference room for months at a time, I mean, it just, it's, it's, it kind of puts a, puts a hindrance on.
Is this our second year of a two-year contract, or second year of a three-year contract with the outside firm?
It's five.
Five, okay.
Yes, it's five.
Are you meeting with them next week to submit our numbers to them?
To start, yes. I've been submitting all the documentation and everything, and, I mean, we still have a few things that we have to, to gather, but we're, we're almost there, so.
That's amazing, I mean, we're talking mid-February.
Well, in fairness, the, the state auditors came out about the same timeline to do their interim work or their startup work, and then they have to get the CAFR reports, which is a comprehensive audit and financial reports, done for all the bigger cities that do a CAFR. We don't do a CAFR, but like Huber Heights does, Kettering does, Central does, so they've got to have those issued by June thirtieth.
Okay.
So they go back and work on those, then they take probably vacation, then they come back to us about, you know, August or September and get it done. They always promise in October, and it's usually the first week in November.
Yeah.
So, and by then it's so old news at that point in time, they either comments, management comments or otherwise, aren't incredibly relevant.
Right.
Do we need a motion to accept the?
Is there a motion to accept the fourth quarter financials? I'll make that motion.
Okay, can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Edwards made a motion to accept the fourth quarter financial report, this was seconded by Mrs. Middlestetter. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you, Nick. Community affairs, Councilwoman Middlestetter.
Thank you, Mayor. I will defer to Pam, when is our deadline? I think we're close to it, or?
February fourteenth was, is the deadline for.
Is the deadline. So we had an app, Village Review Board and Board of Zoning Appeals Property Review openings in February fourteenth is the deadline to submit an application, after which the Community Affairs Committee will schedule interviews and make a recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you. This time we have old business. I'll turn to the city manager for the presentation by Ron Wine of Channel Maintenance Systems regarding Little Sugar Creek.
So we are having technical difficulties. Mr. Wine has a Mac, and his presentation is on a program that is not necessarily compatible with our PC, so he had to call in reinforcements, which is this gentleman here trying to get the presentation up. So Mr. Wine is the owner of Channel Maintenance Systems, so this is, this was a company and a solution that was proposed to, proposed to me and came by the way of Barry Tiffany and Luke Truby from the Green County Audit, or Green County Engineers Office. So they have a unique solution that basically addresses the water and, that would address the water in Little Sugar Creek versus, by natural means, versus building a wall, which was the recommendation in the LJB Engineering Report. So trying to tie all this stuff together, we're still in the very early stages of trying to figure out what kind of solution is going to work the best for us, but this is a very interesting concept, and I know that I did not do the best job of explaining this, because it's a very interesting and kind of foreign solution. So with that being said, I'll, I'll let Ron go ahead and come up while hopefully we can get the presentation going, so don't pay attention to the screen until it turns green.
Apologize for the technology, I'm a technology-challenged individual, and have smart people, but I didn't give them enough time to get ready, so thank you, Jeff. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and Melissa, thanks for inviting us, and council for giving us a chance to talk to you tonight. I'm Ron Wine, I'm a co-owner, managing partner of a company called Channel Maintenance Systems. Probably haven't heard about it, it's been around since nineteen eighty-four, but we've been in business for a long time, but then particularly busy, busy the last few years because of the, a lot, we've had a lot more high rainfalls than normal in this part of the country. Seems like it's either feast or famine with flooding, so we've had a lot of floods and also a lot of droughts. So my presentation may or may not work, but I'm going to try to explain what we do without it, just in reference to your, to deference to your time. My business partner, Bill Holden, started out working for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources in the late seventies, early eighties. So I was really interested in your aging community comments, I feel like I'm catching up on that. But during that time with the Department of Natural Resources, Bill and I worked on the Little Miami State National Scenic River over here that runs pretty much all the way from Yellow Springs to Cincinnati. And one of the things we ran into is we were a river preservation group back then, we're trying to take care of Little Miami, try to keep it green, try to keep it as a recreational resource for the people in southwest Ohio. And we kept running into these little problems with landowners that were hard to like deal with, you know, like people had land that had fallen in the river, and roads and bridges and structures, and so we worked on that for years, and we ran across the guy up in northwest Ohio by the name of George Palmer, and he was a river rat from Mount Pelear, Ohio. And George had come up with some techniques on how to manage streams naturally, kind of use their own forces, if you will. And so that's really what, we were taught that back in the DNR days, and then DNR continued it on for a while. Bill and I left DNR, started up this company in eighty-four, did a little bit of work, then we went off and did other things, and then we got banned back together about four or five years ago and started to, started to do some work. So I guess this might work, I hope the presentation does, I went to a lot of trouble to put it together for you. If you don't mind our rudimentary saying click and all things like that, we'll go ahead and go forward.
Okay.
We're going to talk to you a little about what we do, how we do it, and the results of it, don't use that, I won't touch a thing, Jeff, I'm good. I'm good as.
Everybody hold your breath.
I'm good to stay away from that. But talk about what we do and how we do it. We've done about thirty projects in the last three years, we've saved twenty, thirty million dollars of public infrastructure, roads, bridges, parkland, golf courses. What we do is different, so I don't, I would expect questions, I expect you to kind of stop me if you want to in the presentation, ask a question, but going to try to show you some of our work that we've done, explain, well, how it works, and then how it'd be applicable to the, the issue we have on Little Sugar Creek Road. We've been down to look at that quite a bit lately, so we're pretty familiar with it. So let's try it, Jeff, thank you. Acting city manager, now I guess. So I always like to show this slide, you know, it's like, you like to move the mountain, but does the mountain want to be moved? I mean, it's, it's kind of that way in nature, you know, you try to change things, and sometimes it's easier than not. It just so happens with rivers, they like to move. That's the good and the bad. Excellent. So the good is when they move, the bad is when they move under a road. Thankfully, this is not Little Sugar Creek Road yet, so don't panic, we got time, but, you know, keep going, Jeff. So what happens is you call in the engineering group, you do a big study, they do boreings and, and do all kind of maps, and they come out with a plan, and usually the plan involves coming back and doing something like this, either building a, building a bunch of infrastructure, driving, keep going, driving pylons down, riprap, go ahead, Jeff. Sometimes they actually do build the wall, and these are very expensive, this is a wall that was built for about half a million dollars on about two hundred feet of the, the creek. So walls are very expensive, that's all I wanted to say. Not, not that they're bad, they, they work for a while, and that's okay, but walls are pretty expensive. So in lieu of walls, go ahead, Jeff, this is George Palmer back in nineteen eighty-four. And I, I mean, I was younger then, but I did meet him, and he trained us at DNR. And George is a river rat, he learned how to control rivers using the way they normally move, only doing it for you instead of against you, next slide. So the Corps of Engineers got really interested in this, so back in nineteen eighty-two, they did a, did a big, long study about it. They hired, did a contract with Miami University, and they came out and walked around with George all over the state, looked at all their plans and programs, and they found that, hey, this actually works. And so unfortunately, George passed away in two thousand and twelve, and I think he took the book of tricks with him, there's no company behind him. So Bill and I and a few other people are the only ones, we just lived long enough that he trained us, and we still know how to do it. So we use George's techniques, but George used to use mules, horses, tractors, we're too lazy for that, so we modernized it, we use, you know, occasional backo, tracko, winch truck, but it's all the same, it's all natural materials, and this is the way we do the work, next slide. So the approach is pretty straightforward, we manage streams, we can cause the channel to realign, we can create deposition where there's erosion, we can create erosion where there's deposition, we can remove log jams, remove gravel bars. So on Little Sugar Creek, since my business partner, I've walked about ten times now, there, there's two areas where the creek has meandered, is that Mae, what's the name of that park, is it Mae Park?
McGee Park.
McGee Park, sorry, wrong, wrong day, wrong mayor. McGee Park, below McGee Park, the creek has meandered back to the west against the road, and it turns and meanders again back against the road. So what's happening over time is that that bedrock and that roadbed and streambank are just getting undermined by that creek steadily. Every day goes by, it's, those two spots keep getting undermined, so, you know, accordingly that starts to slump. So next slide. So our strategy is to, this is an example of kind of a different scale, but kind of the way this thing works, just a picture. You can see where the arrow is, that's the streambank going away from you, so you're looking downstream. That creek had heretofore gone around there and eroded that left bank out. We dropped a tree, and we'll call them a kicker, and then we created a deposition zone behind that with brush and trees that are latched together. We cable that all and trees that are latched together. We cable that all down, I'll show you all in a minute, into the ground, and also down the streambed. So, what happens when it floods, then, the stream actually deposits where it used to erode. I have a lot more pictures, I hope, to show you about that. Next slide. We did a lot of work for the city of Springboro. I'm going to show you some of that. Good next slide, Jeff. So, instead of doing engineering drawings, we kind of just get the maps out and walk the stream and do a work plan. So, a lot of money's saved upfront because there's no A and E firm. There's not, you know, a lot of people spend hundreds of thousands of dollars just on the plans and the studies. So, we really don't need to do that for what we do. We're not engineers. I'm an MBA, which means I know, you know, a lot about some stuff, a little bit about everything. But from a practical perspective, Bill and I have about sixty years on rivers and streams, so we know how they work. So, we just come into an area, walk it, look at how it works, imagine it during high water, view it during high water, and then come in and kind of lay a work plan in place to redirect the stream over time. Next slide. So, I want you to see here, this is a stream that's eroding downstream on the right-hand bank. This happens to be on a golf course. Next slide. Last trees have fallen in. You can see there's a cart path right beside it. That was kind of a big deal for the city of Springboro. They didn't want to lose their cart path. Next slide. So, I want you to keep your eye, like, on this drain pipe. So, here we are, standing in that same stream, looking at the bank, and there's the drain pipe, right? So, just keep, keep your eye on that, and I think I can explain it a little bit better. So, we came in, next slide, extended that drain pipe about twenty feet out in the creek, put the trees, the kickers, the sedimentation devices up against the bank. Go ahead, next slide. We anchor everything underground six or eight feet with what we call a dead man anchor, which is basically a big log with some high-tech cable strung off of it. It's tied to all these tree, treetops and logs that are in the stream. We also tie them down to the stream. Next slide. So, what we like is floods, because this all gets, this is weird. It all gets done during the flood, not when the water's down. You know, we like floods, once we do this. So, go ahead and see if that'll work. Got a video? Nope. Okay, well, this is after this flood. You can kind of see the, the area that's depositioned in behind the, the bank. Go ahead, Jeff. Next one. Go ahead, next one. So, there's that drain pipe after two floods. So, I hope you can see how much stream has come back in there and washed, washed in where it was washing out. And next slide, Jeff, I think there's more. That's looking across the same way. You can barely see the drain pipe that's in there, but it's, excuse me, right there. So, this is just after two or three floods. So, what happens is, once we do this installation, next slide, next slide. And once we do this installation, this is a few months later when it starts to green up, every time it floods, it builds streambank back in. So, you know, that's the idea. We build it where it needs to be built. We remove the gravel bar. We remove the log jams that are causing it to go the wrong way. Let's try another one, Jeff. We also did a pro, a big project in Springboro. It's a little closer to this one in Little Sugar Creek, where lower Springboro Road was getting undermined by Clear Creek, and they wanted us to get in there and change it before it got to the road, and the road fell into the river. Kind of like that first slide I showed you. Next slide. So, similar situation. And the road's right behind those trees on the right, if you can see it. We'll show it to you later, I think. So, go ahead, Jeff. Next one. So, again, what happens, these gravel bars, just every time it floods, the gravel bar's growing that direction, and lands falling in from the other side. I mean, it's kind of simple, but, so what we try to do is just turn that the other way around. Next slide. So, this is looking back up the stream. We're installing these kickers, these sedimentation zones along the, the streambank. Next slide. So, then it floods. This is looking the same area under a flood. Next one, Jeff. Our video's not working real well, but this is a video. If I had my...
I can actually zoom in from the other side of the video.
Oh, can you?
It's going to be separate from this bridge though.
Oh, maybe we'll come back and look at that at the end. We'll come back and show you this video. But what happens is, instead of the terminal velocity, the, the high velocity of the stream going against the erosion area, the high velocity actually goes to the other side of the channel. And this area, you can see, is pretty dead now. I mean, normally that was the high velocity of the stream coming along that bank. In this case, we've kind of killed, killed all the velocity of the stream, and so water likes to go, you know, downhill. So, if it can't go the way it wants to go, it goes the other way. So, what happens over time is, go ahead, next slide. That gravel bar then is gone. You know, that channel has moved over maybe thirty feet now. Next slide. This riverbank is being restored, and today it looks more like that, and it continues to grow the other way gradually. So, we have to kind of do it, it's as much art as science, because you can over-correct and cause somebody else a problem, which you don't want to do. But we try to manage it in such a way that the stream gets realigned where it needs to be aligned, and the erosion problems are taken care of, so that whatever needs to be protected is protected as soon as we do the work. Then it just gets better after that. Next one. So, that's also a video you can't see, but that stream channel, you can see where the gravel bar used to be, and then you can see how much water has come in on that gravel bar now, so that the gravel bar's basically just getting pushed to the other side where the road is today. Okay, Jeff? Thanks. So, again, we like to get to things as early as possible, because if you get to things too late, you can't really fix them this way.
We can do it.
I'm sorry. Yeah, just, if you can, go ahead. I'll talk while you're doing that. Good at that. So, what we try to do is get to a problem before it gets really bad. So, Green County brought us in last year to work on a couple of problems that they have. One was on Eleazar Road, which is in the southeastern part of the county, and another one's on Anderson Road, which we really just got started on. But in both cases, it was part of Caesar's Creek. Caesar's Creek had cut in so far that it was actually, where it used to go under the bridge at Eleazar Road, it was actually going about a hundred feet against the roadbed, and then coming in sideways to the bridge, and then going in that way. So, what we, what we did there was similar to what we would do if we had the opportunity in Little Sugar Creek, and that is begin to realign the channel back to where it used to be, you know, in that case. Can you show a video? Videos are good if they work. I don't think they're going to. If it doesn't work, don't worry about it, Jeff. Don't worry about it. This isn't going to work. I don't want to waste it. Okay, here we go. Here's that, that shot I told you about at, in Springboro, looking downstream. This is all installation on the right. And you see on the left-hand side how fast the water's going? That's what gets it off of that bank and gets the other bank eroding. And then you start building banks over here on the right-hand side. Soon as it, soon as it gets worse, and then every time it floods, it gets better. We usually come back and add some material if we need to. Can you do another one? This is the one emailed, that park I showed you. Again, looking upstream, the water used to come against this bank on the left. See how dead it is over there? That means whatever it's carrying, it just drops, silt, gravel, sand. And it's a natural process, so I always try to caution people, this is not going to look like it's done day one. It's going to look like it's different. And then a year from now, it's going to look a lot different. In this case, it's not even been two years, and that streambank is clear, filled out already. So, you can see the velocity of the water going the other way. Go ahead, let's try one more, Jeff. I think there's another one I wanted to show. Next one. That's, that's, that's the after slide. Go ahead, let that run. I'm sorry. Let that run. I don't want to show you too much, but I think you can see that, you all...
Can you mute the sound?
My sound?
Okay, sound.
My wife likes to mute me. I don't know how to mute myself.
Okay.
New Jersey.
Video, sound.
Oh, there you are. So, there's that, there's that drainage pipe I showed you before. See how far it's covered up? Okay. So, is that good enough? You get the idea? So, we've done about twenty-some projects in the state the last three years. A lot of them have been in Warren County, Green County, Summit County, up around Akron. They're all in different phases of development. What I wanted to talk to you about Little Sugar Creek Road is that every day that goes by, it gets worse. I mean, I've walked down there. I'm not trying to scare you. I know you know all about it. It's a difficult situation. I still think there's time to save the road without having to, you know, construct walls or, or dig pylons or whatever the recommendations are. But in order to do that, the creek's going to have to be moved a little bit away from the road. It's going to take cooperation from all the landowners, because, you know, you have a right-of-way on the roadway, but there's also whoever owns the property on the other side. And in Ohio, repairing rights are pretty crazy, really. It's hard to define sometimes. But we're not, we wouldn't recommend doing anything drastic, but we could go in there, we could redirect Little, Little Sugar Creek in such a way to take the pressure off the base of the road, to stop the erosion like tomorrow, and then continue to add to it over time to kind of restore that riverbank and try to keep that road from slumping or further, further degrading. One thing people like about what we do is it's really not horribly expensive for, for what it does. We don't have a lot of big material costs. We use, we use the trees, the materials that are already in the floodway. We don't haul in stuff. We use some high-tech cabling to anchor things. It sounds pretty simple, but that's about all we use. Few fence posts, trees. It's a very natural, eco-friendly way to do things. But it works. George Palmerer did projects in North Carolina, Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky. My business partner and I, Bill Holderan, did twenty projects on Little Miami back in the day, some up on the Stillwater and Greenville Creek. I've talked to Melissa about going out and looking, looking at some projects firsthand. Would like to get a day where it's warmer than ten degrees to do that, but...
And not raining or snowing?
Yeah, last week wasn't great, so we'll see what happens this week. But, so she can come out and actually see it. We finished a project last year for the Warren County Engineer, and it's down on Springboro Road, Redline, Five Points Road in Clear Creek Township. It's very similar to Little Sugar Creek. I'm going to show that project to Melissa when we go out this week or next. But we had to come in and actually stabilize the road from getting undermined further, and gradually move the stream channel twenty or thirty feet off the road, and begin to reestablish that streambank. The Warren County Engineer liked it enough that he just, we just signed a contract with him to do ten more projects this year. So, I don't, you know, I want to give you some sense of comfort that you, you don't know us. This probably sounds a little too good to be true. I know some people look at me like that, really. And my first conversation we had, Melissa said, does this work? And I said, yeah, it works. And, but you'd have to know that it's not going to work overnight. It'll take a year or two to restore the streambank. It'll, if we do a really good job in five years, you'll never even know we were there, because everything we put in gets covered up. The trees we top grow back. We plant trees if we need to. There's some of that area along Little Sugar Creek Road that probably should be replanted a little bit, because the, the roots of the trees, when they grow together, is really what holds the streambank together. It's just when they fall that's the problem. So, we recommended, you know, we'd recommend managing that stretch of stream for four or five years, just to make sure it all comes back in right, that it stays that way, that there's no future problems. But our, our cost structure is such that I think it would probably be very cost competitive in terms of what your other options would be. Generally were at least a third of what most other options are, because we just don't have all the, you know, we don't have the big A and E costs upfront. We don't have a lot of material costs, and really it's just no Alon labor. So, I hope I explained that well. Sorry about the slides, but I guess we got them all in eventually.
Yeah, I agree.
And if you can entertain, I'll take any questions you have.
You've seen our engineer report, have you not?
Yeah.
That I had done by LJB, and I mean, you can incorporate that into what you're doing, and this all makes sense and ties together. I'm not an engineer. I get the MBA degree too, but...
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think LJB, the, the report that I read, they talked about maybe the, they thought the bedrock might be slumping, and it, it might be moving, but it's moving because the creek, I believe it's moving because the creek is undermining it. I don't think it's moving because there's earthquakes.
Not the water running down the hill or anything like that, close to the end or anything?
Not, not really. I think, I think water running down the hill's kind of the after effect on that, but the fundamental problem is that creek is undermining the roadbed. I mean, to me, that's the easy thing to fix first. There's some areas where, to be honest with you, it's so steep that we probably have to do a lot of, a lot of work to make sure that it doesn't slump anymore.
Okay.
Because, you know, gravity is still gravitating. It still works. And I know the problem we just finished up, the, the project we just finished up in Akron, we actually had to do that where they had a road that was falling in the creek. They had somebody come in and try to fix it. It didn't work. They built a, a metal retaining wall. It didn't work because the creek kept going around it, in front of it and back of it. But we actually had to go about, you know, ten feet up with logs and the kickers and the deposition zone, because we had to build the bank up that high. So, that's starting to come back now. This is a little different, so I, I know that it is, but all I can tell you is I've done it a while, and I know it works. And, and the environment, the environmental people like you. The other advantage so far is that since we don't add any material, any unnatural material in the floodway, we don't add material to the floodway. The Corps of Engineers likes it, because we're not restricting, you know, the flood flow. We're actually helping it usually, because we're taking out log jams and gravel bars. The water moves better. And since we don't dredge the channel or, or do any kind of effluent or anything, EPA is fine with it, because there, there's no EPA requirements. So, it's, it's kind of slick, because it goes quick. I mean, you don't need a lot of permits to do the work, and once the work's done, you see results, and then you come back and, and watch it over time.
Thanks. I think it's worth pursuing. I think it's something we have to look at with the other option costing us in excess of seven million dollars, so...
We'll be less.
I hope.
I like the natural approach. I really like that.
Yeah, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, for the group, I'm the engineer.
I'm not.
So, I, I think what I'm hearing you say is that had we been basically grooming the, the stream over the years to prevent sort of the reroute of the stream into the, the roadway, we wouldn't be in the predicament we're in.
Yeah. I hate to say it's that simple, but probably is.
Okay.
But it didn't get like that in the last six months.
Instantly.
It's been happening for a long time.
No, I just don't think we ever really considered that.
Most people don't.
Second thing, I mean, you're not going to, the, the stream doesn't come up to the stream.
Right.
How do you get the stream to deposit what fell down, ten, twenty, thirty, forty feet up? Do you add on top?
We might, we might have to, but I think initially, we're going to start with the idea of, of, I think I said early on, for some reason, the last few years, we've had a heck of a lot more high flood events than usual. So, high water is, you know, we, we may have had the similar amount of rain, but the way we got the rain was different. You can, whatever, for whatever reason. So, we'd go to where the highest water flows are and try to establish the stream that high, and then take a look at how that works in terms of stabilizing the bank. So, if we stabilize it enough underneath, it shouldn't slump anymore.
And so, if you have to dig in to anchor, where do you dig in to anchor? Do you dig...
Part way up the bank.
Really?
Yeah. We'll be careful how we do it, but we, we dig into the bank. If we don't have to dig in the bank, we'll just cable stuff. We'll, we'll cable trees to other trees. That works fine, too, if we do it the right way. It's sort of the, again, I'm the MBA talking, the engineer, with some respect for, but we have to be careful how we dig in to the bank. But we, we would anchor into that bank, those, those anchor logs, but they'd be perpendicular to the, the way the water flows and down pretty deep.
Okay.
And most of the anchors would be basically stream level, when we got done.
Could there be an impact on the other side of the stream?
There will be. That's kind of the management side of it.
There's a million-dollar house up on that hill.
Oh, we're not going to do that, but we, they might, they might have to be willing to allow us to move the stream channel ten or fifteen feet in their direction. But I don't, we're not, we're not going to be kicking floods in high water over against, I know the houses you're talking about.
Well, I mean, I might worry about the water, but the same sort of issue. Houses are up here. The bank goes down there, the river.
I've looked at it. It's okay there. It's not going to be a problem. What we'd probably do in that area is we'd take a few of the trees out that are along the east side of the bank, free up some capacity for the stream to flow in that, down that side, use those trees on the west side of the bank to create some friction and deposition. The channel would move gradually. That's the reason we like to work on it for a few years, because we don't want to go in and, it, it's easy to overdo it and cause it, cause a problem, but we've got experience making sure that that doesn't happen.
If I'm not mistaken, a lot of that area that, where the stream would move eastward is going to be city land anyway. It's the green, green part that's going to be...
Yeah, I think it is. At least part of it is.
It's not, it's not, not going to be on private land. Once, once that development is done.
Right.
That, a lot of that green is turned over to the city as green space.
Yeah, and we don't need a lot of room on either side. We just need to have access from that side to be able to get in there.
Yeah.
What is it less for? I mean, does it have to be maintained every ten years or twenty years?
No, not really. Once, once you get it corrected, once it gets corrected, it's pretty, it's pretty easy to maintain. And in fact, what we would do is we'd... And in fact, what we would do is we'd get your safety folks down there and just teach them a few fundamental things, and they could do it themselves. It's not, it's not something, once it's fixed, it's, you have to really worry that much about.
And what about new log jams and brush pileup and stuff?
Could happen.
Those things need to come out, though.
That could always happen, yeah. You'd have to watch it. So, we'd probably plant, put a maintenance plan in place that made sense for the city, but our goal would be get this thing down to much less than a million dollars. You know, we're not, we're not thinking anything like seven million dollars. It doesn't need to be that much. Pardon?
Well, I just, I'd be interested if, um, you were going to go out and Melissa and look at another project or two, uh, just walking that with you, um, and seeing and learning a bit more. I, I was humored. The, the military spent quite a bit of money teaching me how to do research, so I was tickled when they showed you a picture, the one report that I...
Oh, you had it already?
Yeah, yeah. So, it was, um, it was very interesting reading, and, um, as you say, um, a lot of success with that.
I'd love, love for you to see some, it's, it's easier to, it's just easier to go see it, you know? It's just hard to show it.
Yeah, bigger couples like to go out and see it too, just kind of, yeah, yeah.
We'd be happy to show you anything you like. Thanks for the time, dude, appreciate it.
Order us up a nice day, will ya?
I know. When we were supposed to meet la, at the end of last week, I mean, the snow was coming down and it was freezing, and I was like, "Uh, can we reschedule?" I wanted to try to do it before today, because Ryan and I were both going to go, but I was, uh, not into the weather at the time.
Good judgment. That's the MBA coming in, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, I want to be able to stand and talk about it and see it firsthand and not be snowed or rained on and have to get in the car in another thirty seconds.
We'd be happy to entertain any time you guys want to go and take a look, and I think it'd probably be, be hoovy to see it with your own eyes, and...
Absolutely.
It's just, uh, interesting to stand on five or six feet of riverbank that wasn't there a year ago. It's easier to believe when you're standing on it.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Good report, thank you. Hopefully, a good, uh, good option to consider.
I want to thank the computer guy, too.
Definitely thank the computer guy.
Right in the nick of time.
Okay, next up on the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business from council? Next is open discussion. We'll start with council, then we'll go to the viewing audience. You can start with you, Ernie.
Tim, you will be missed. I appreciate your effort. Sorry you had to take this, uh, direction, but, uh, I completely understand. Thanks, big thanks to Dan. I know he's not here, but appreciate his effort and, uh, continued, uh, effort moving forward. Also, I'm very impressed with the attendance of the meetings since I've been on council. It's, uh, it's a lot of folks showing up, and, uh, I'm happy to see that. Lastly, I, I think with, uh, Elaine's comment on the cost of what Cory had offered us to do the video rather than send our city manager off to, uh, pedal, uh, without a permit, a hundred, two hundred dollars, I think we ought to just go ahead and, uh, let her move forward with, uh, the, the video personally, so...
Okay, thanks. Dr. Van Veld Heisen?
I'd just say again, Tim, going to be missed. Ernie's already telling me now I get a hundred percent of his attention down here, so... And, um, other than that, I look forward to, um, walking with Melissa on the, uh, seeing a couple of the other projects that, uh, we've done, see if there's a viable alternative.
I too, I, too bad, Tim, that, that the development happened, and we'll miss you. You worked really hard to get here. And I really, I'm impressed with this natural solution. I think we sometimes over-engineer and over-complicate things, and this is letting nature fix the problems. I, I, I like that approach, so...
Thank you, Elaine.
Tim, sorry, I won't be able to yet to work with you, but I'm assuming since you have every, every other Monday penciled in for council, you'll come and be in our viewing, viewing audience? Is that the plan now? Okay, appreciate that.
I can't anything else, whatever else from council said. Tim, obviously, we're going to miss you, and, uh, I'm pleased to see that we have an option for Little Sugar Creek that's not in the, uh, million-dollar price range, so, let's move forward on that and see what we can do with it.
It's interesting once you see it. I had a horrible, I had a horrible time trying to explain that last week. Because it's hard to wrap your head around that, isn't it?
I honestly didn't have that much trouble seeing it, because I've paid a lot of attention to how water's working, and I've actually done some tiny little bit of that kind of thing in my own yard where water was the problem, and let nature redirect where the water was going, and... It works beautifully, yeah, so I, I like that.
And quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. This time, we have open discussion from the, in the audience. Take the lecture, and please give us your name, address, and your title to three minutes.
Hello, I'm Karen McGill, thirty-eight, forty-six West Franklin Street, Belbrook, Ohio. And I'm going to give you a little background, and then I have a question. I was a language arts teacher for thirty-five years, for students from primary grades all the way through college. And I've been on the Village Review Board for two years. I sub in the Belbrook schools. When I taught, I emphasized to kids that they should never jump to conclusions in writing and speaking their opinions. Instead, they should always be able to back up their opinions, both in speaking and writing. And I taught them that hasty generalizations without numerous facts to support them only result in a fallacious argument or, uh, an argument that's invalid. So, for example, if a student said, um, "The food in the cafeteria is really awful", my response would be, "Give me some reasons why you think the food in the cafeteria is awful. Let's support your opinion." So, having given you that background about, uh, how I used to teach, I was pretty disturbed by an opinion that was expressed at the last council meeting. According to the minutes of the city council meeting, Mr. Havens gave the opinion that the Village Review Board is, quote, "stifling progress", unquote. So, I went back and I looked at all my records for two years, at every case that came before us, and I have found no evidence that we stifled anything. In fact, most of the things were approved. So, Mr. Havens, I would like you now to state factual examples. In other words, specific evidence of a time that the Village Review Board stifled progress.
And Karen, this is not a question-answer session. I'm sorry, it's open discussion, but we're not even here to do questions and answers. If Mr. Havens cares to answer, I'll let him answer. If he doesn't want to answer, then that's over. I'm sorry, that's the rules, that's how it goes. Ernie, if you'd like to answer, you're free, free to respond. If you don't care to respond, then...
I'm fine responding, at least in some degree. I was repeating the words of the planning board, and I agreed with them.
It was not written that way in the minutes.
It was definitely said.
Okay, it was not written that way in the minutes, so I should take this before the planning board and ask them why we're stifling progress?
I actually, um, agreed with them in regards to the time that I came to the meeting as well, based on what I witnessed business owners go through, and I've also been approached by multiple business owners, and, uh, that has been the, the common theme from them, and, uh, so with that...
So, you're telling me, you're telling me, for example, the common theme is the food in the cafeteria isn't any good, that you can't give me a specific example?
I haven't heard anything positive regarding the VRB. In the process of campaigning, and in the process of my daily business interacting with business owners in the community, nothing positive, only negative. So, that's my, uh, my experience.
So, you can't give a specific example of anything that we did?
I can. The decision to, uh, abruptly disapprove the sign from Bella Realty was given because I don't like it. I think it looks tacky, and those aren't...
That, that is only part of what was said.
That, you asked for a fact. That fact was said, and I didn't think that was professional. So, that's just one instance. I don't think we have time really to go through several, so...
No, we don't, we don't, that's fine.
I think that those of us on the Village Review Board didn't want downtown Belbrook and its historical value to be turned into seven-twenty-five with bright, shining lights and flashing things.
Thank you, Mrs. McGill, thank you. Does anyone else from the viewing audience care to speak tonight to council? Does any member of council have any other business to come before tonight? There are none, this meeting's adjourned.